Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call for an order. The August regular board meeting of the Amanda Park District Board of Commissioners. The first item on our business is to accept or amend the agenda. Some need to modify it tonight.
Correct.
Do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
Yes. I'd like to. Yeah.
Use the sitter.
I don't know if she can accept the agenda.
So, I think, okay. And let's hold a roll. I'll vote on this. This is now on the table, starting with Lauren.
Aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Next podium is a public comment. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to address the board tonight?
Well, I guess I'll say something. If I could sit down without rolling a wheel. I'd put a motor on it, actually, but you think I'm kidding. Anyway, I just wanted to say for just a couple minutes how totally pleased I am with the way the Park District has handled all the planning for Weaver Park. It's been, I think, just brilliant. Some of the thoughts that came up, the changes and all that, Derek and his planning group, Orky and the sports group, Matt Falk, and then all of his environmental type. This has been like one of those puzzles with strange-looking geometric pieces, and you can put it together a whole bunch of different ways, and which way is best. And I think you've worked and worked and worked and worked on it and did a fantastic job. I am really pleased. I hope that you can even get to the point where, I know the sledding hill is an iffy thing, and I hope that can go and even get more activities there. I don't think I can do any of those activities anymore, but I fully intend to roll over and watch people making fools of themselves doing those activities, all right? So, this should be fun, if nothing else. I just want to emphasize how fantastic this has all turned out. And I've said something like this before, but I really think, like, this is worth three or four pages in Parks and Recreation magazine, and you ought to call someone and make sure they know about it, all right? So, thanks to Tim and everyone else. I think the compromises have been just brilliant, the final. I can't wait. So, hurry up. And thank you all. Now I'm impatient.
Now we needed some money to make a realization.
Thank you for being a part of the process.
Thank you. Thank you all for just working so hard. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for all the nice pictures of Meadowbrook you posted recently.
Well, I'm sorry.
Some nice pictures of Meadowbrook you posted recently.
Oh, well, it's hard to take bad ones. And the same is happening with Weaver, too. So, yes, well, thank you. And I was in the woods today at UC, and I was just thinking, this is the first time in a while I've seen no deer. You know, there just doesn't seem to be. There were two fawns fifteen feet away, head to head, just looking at me, spotted still and all that, and then they both moved off. So, it's really a fantastic park system.
Thanks for that. Thank you, Carl. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board tonight? Seeing no sign on that, then just move on to the staff introduction.
Yeah, we're joined by Charles Rogers, our new office manager here at Planning Operations. And Charles, he's a whole lot of protection, but he came in to share some of his perspectives and things he's excited about. Charles?
So, just to give myself some history, my name is Charles Rogers, and I've actually worked with Park District since 2012. I was part-time over at the pool, and then a pool manager, and then 2015, I was promoted to the Phillips Recreation Center as Office Service Specialist. And so, I've been there for over nine years, and just this last month on the 22nd, I'm now the office manager here at Planning and Operations.
It's been great having Charles join our team. I really haven't missed a step. It's been fantastic, and welcome George, our team here.
Welcome.
Thrilled to have Charles make this move. We're always excited when our staff take opportunities and move into different positions. It's always made us better, bringing all that knowledge and experience. Terrific. We're so glad.
Awesome. I'd say welcome.
Yeah. I feel very welcome. I mean, I think I've interacted with every single person in some capacity with recreation out of work in some way, and which is really great.
Thank you.
Well, we miss you at Phillips. Congratulations.
I heard that from the senior potluck today.
Yes.
They missed me, and half of them didn't know I was leaving until I told them.
Oh, some of the Tai Chi class was horrified, and they said, oh, no, no, you're still looking for the Park District. Where is he? Health and Wellness does not even open just in Planning and Operations. Oh. So bad.
It's interesting that folks from Charles' life at Phillips, you can tell you're already having some conversations back and forth, and the regulars are with it, and then asking about things like portable toilets. There's strong connections throughout the district. It's very helpful.
Yeah.
And being at Phillips, it actually helped me with some of the interactions with my new position, because doing memorials and trying, and I, ten years ago, I would not have been able to converse with this person and kind of give them perspective, and it was about her dad passing, and I was able to actually kind of talk with her and get up to speed on what she wanted for the memorials, instead of me kind of fumbling around. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
We like that. Perfect. So, now move on then to UpDak appointments.
Kelsey's here to give us an overview, walk us through, and answer any questions.
Hi, everyone. So, today we have three candidates recommended for appointment to UpDak. We've got Martha McSins, Lauren Carplus, and Darryl Price. Mr. Price is actually here with us today. So, this cycle, we had appointed two previously in June, I believe, at the June meeting, and those candidates, one was a reappointment, Mr. White. He had been appointed initially to fill a short-term vacancy. One was a short-term vacancy appointment, Myra Stevens, and then the other is for a full-term appointment, Selena Harper, and I forgot, Eusebio. Eusebio was also appointed for a full term. So, we have three more candidates. Assuming these candidates are appointed today, our final membership going into the next year will be seventeen UpDak members, which is pretty much right in that sweet spot of between fifteen and eighteen people. And our candidates have all been very excited, very eager, and we're looking forward to bringing them on board and working with them. And as far as recruitment goes, you know, our, you know, best ambassadors are always current UpDak members, we find, and so we continue to do that. We continue to attend neighborhood events, of course, our own MCD events, as well as kind of trying to work with the city of Ruben and leverage that network a little bit as well. So, I'd be happy to take any questions about anything.
I'm sorry, is that Laura or Lauren?
Oh, Lauren. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah. And actually, one point I do want to note about her candidacy is she's extending our geographic reach a little bit in the area that's been typically less well-represented.
Well, I move to appoint Martha McSins, Lauren Carplus, and Darryl Price to serve three-year terms as part of the 2024 through 2027 class of the Amanda Park District Advisory Committee or UpDak.
Has been moved to a second. Has there any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, starting with Rogers.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Bring this to the UpDak report, and there was no meeting in July, so this is...
Yeah, oh, yeah. No meeting in July, so we don't have a report.
And that brings us to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda this evening, our approval of the minutes of the July 9 regular board meeting, and approval of the minutes of the July 9, 2024, and second exception, which obviously is the same kind. The receipt of the monthly reports from each of our three departments, action to accept the philanthropy report, acting solicit with gratitude, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and, well, I don't think that, I don't know, I didn't need this double-listed here.
Yes.
That's the rule. And just for those that might be watching at home or do not know, under the rules of our consent agenda, any single commissioner can remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate consideration this evening. Is there any commissioner who wishes to do so? Hearing none, and also, under the rules of our consent agenda, once we have a motion on this point, discussion won't be closed. So, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve all the action of the consent agenda and separate information I have listed on the consent agenda and omnibus.
One second.
Has been moved in second, and as I said, there should be no further discussion. This one, like the others, is on the table. Let's do a roll call, starting with Lauren.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. And brings us to financial reports.
Welcome back, Michael.
Thank you.
All right, we'll jump right into our revenue and expenditures reports. These are for the prior twelve-month period, showing budget for the current period, preliminary audited results for the three months ending on July 31st, 2024. Beginning with page one, this report is labeled sum one. This is all funds excluding the capital improvements fund. Revenues, total revenues, six million, six hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. This is up about a million over the last month and last year. Good spot to be in. Noting that we did receive our third property tax distribution on July 29th. It was only five hundred and forty-five thousand, but we are at fifty-five percent of distributions received compared to forty-nine percent at the same time last year. Expenditures, two million, eight hundred ten thousand, two hundred and forty-six. In tune with the revenues, this is up a million dollars over last month and about even with last year. So, the money came in, and the money went up. This leaves us with a surplus after three months, meaning in excess of revenues over expenditures of three million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-nine. Again, this is about even with last month, and it's up about 1.2 million over last year's same period. Page two is sum two, and this is our capital fund stand-alone. Revenues for three months, one hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Sounds very tepid. This is very similar to last month, but is dramatically lower than same time last year. Last year, remember, at this time, you were receiving our best city and county, 2.5 million dollars. So, that's why it's so dramatically different from last year. Expenditures in the capital improvement fund, two million, seven hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven. All I can say here is we are approaching the end of our construction project. This number's going to be big, so get used to that number. Expenditures obviously exceeding revenues. This creates a deficit of two million, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-four. Again, just a reminder that the majority of our project is grant-driven, and grants are by reimbursement only, so we have to front-load it for us to get it back in return. So, it'll look like we like that for a little bit. Page three, sum three, this is all funds district-wide, and we are just noting at the bottom that the ending fund balance for the district as a whole, eleven million, twenty-three thousand, ninety-five dollars. Again, compared to last month, especially last year, this is down considerably, and again, in tandem with being able to cover while grant reversals come in. We're pulling from all of our resources, so the balance won't look like. So, the remaining summary reports are the individual reports for our three working funds. That would be the general recreation and museum, the last page being the indoor pool fund. And if anybody does notice on the general fund for interest, there is a year-to-date negative balance. Negative interest sounds like a little bit of a conflict, but that is normal for this time of year. We do have to do an annual accrual for our auditors of accrued interest, so it looks negative as we reverse it out on 5-1 until the CDs actually mature, and then that interest hits our account. So, just wanted to make a note of that, in case anybody happens to notice it. On to our second report. This is our treasury report. Reported the amount of cash the district has on a single day, July 31st, 2024. All twenty-five funds are listed down the left, as well as where all of the cash is invested is displayed across the top. Bottom right indicates investments on the state totaling thirteen million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. And on page two, the top section of this report, or this page, is the amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts of that thirteen million, three hundred and forty-seven from page one. We do have ten million, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars out in investments at varying rates. Again, where all of our current investments are in CDs over 5%, but the current trend is it's starting to move down. Not that it's a bad place, but it's, you know, middle four and a half, 4.7%, so still really very good, but I think our glory days are about done for investing. So, still a good position to be in. The bottom section of page two is our inter-fund loans. Here, there was no new activity. However, the school district did pay their annual contribution, so there were some inter-fund transfers of about a hundred thousand dollars between rec and the pool. Those have been returned to the pool as the school district has paid their annual tab. Page three of the treasury report, this lists disbursements for the month of July. Vendor payments will match the accounts payable on the consent agenda, and total disbursements of funds, which include the two payrolls during July, and all vendor payments, four million, one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. Again, capital improvements is 3.2 million of that. I present to you the treasury report for audit.
I move to accept the treasury report for audit.
Second. Has been moved in second. Is there any discussion or questions on this point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously.
Okay, then we're on to the capital budget reports. Page one is our 2019A, and a little bit of activity here. Seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and four dollars was expensed to port construction for invoices number fourteen and fifteen. This was using funds from our HCEO grant. The remainder, one million, eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one, was to satisfy those two bills in full, using our general fund transfer. And we had five thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars expensed, a couple different vendors, which is for miscellaneous supplies and some testing. Next page, 2024, we did receive nineteen hundred dollars towards tributes and donations in revenue, and in expenditures, we had two thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars under our construction crew supplies. This was supplies for the split rail fencing, repairs in Meadowbrook Park, I believe. We had twenty thousand dollars paid to, expensed to Row Mine, and this was for a portion of the exterior painting here at the planning and operations building. Sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars was expensed to RanToal Truck Center. This was from the purchase of a garbage truck, and this is only a portion of it. It's a split with capital budget twenty-two as well, so you'll see that again moving through your reports. And then there was two thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. This was the remainder of the Row Mine for the painting. The origins to contingencies was expensed and paid to contingency lines. Next page, 2023 report. Under expenditures, small expenditures for construction crew supplies, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Floyd, seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars was paid to Mid Illinois for construction number three, specific to, relevant to ADA. And we had eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight expensed to Mid Illinois. This was for construction number four, and also fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and two dollars expensed to a couple different vendors for equipment at Prairie Play and then the shade structures. Again, this is another one that's split, so you're going to see it on the next page for 2022. Under the trails project, or, yeah, trails project line, eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars to Mid Illinois, construction number three. We had two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven expensed to, I think it's playground plastics for pickets, number two. And then, using our OSLAB grant, we had a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-two expensed to Mid Illinois for construction number three, number four. Also fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and two, if these numbers look all right, I'm saying, fifty-fifty split. Fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and two expensed for equipment, shade structures, and then the remainder to RanToal Truck Center for the garbage truck, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine. And there was no activity in the 2021, 20 or 2019 reports during July. Is there any questions on the capital budgets?
We had a really nice tour of the new garbage truck on Sunday. Very proud. Very proud of this. I mean, I got a great tour. They showed me every, each of them. It was really nice. It's a really nice job.
Money well spent. Awesome. Absolutely. Over to Andy. Come on, sorry.
Great, yeah. The old ones were as well, there was time.
Certainly was.
All right, I'll start as usual with Health and Wellness Center. I'll start at the outside, work our way in. This is the, pretty much, the final paving work outside. So, on the left-hand side, this is a bench pad. This is a path for bike parking. And then here's Washington, and what would be the approach and entry. So, they did the walk first, and then they poured the approach. So, that's all poured right now, and you can drive over it to get into the parking lot. And now, moving inside the building, on the left is basically, you walk in the entry, and you take a right, you see the stairway to get upstairs. Office corridors to the right, little cubby area underneath the stairway, and this will take you down to the community room at the far end, as well as the restrooms and locker rooms. And so, here's a peek of the men's restroom, locker room on the first floor. A lot of the finishes throughout the building are pretty much there, so it looks really nice. Personally, I love this tile look behind the mirrors as well. Looks really sharp inside. You can see some of the lighting and sound baffles that they have as well. So, lighting fixtures are pretty close to being complete. You'll see some more and a couple other pictures here, too. So, moving down the hall, this is inside the community room space at the very north end. The entry would be over here, and then we've got a lot of the cabinetry. Office furniture was installed today. Next week, we'll have furniture that, tables and chairs that goes to the community room. The chairs and tables will all start getting installed next Monday as well in the lobby, and then we have a few chairs and stuff that goes upstairs in the hallway as well, but we're getting a lot of that stuff kind of to the site now. It's really getting close, for sure.
What's the floor in this section?
The what?
The floor.
So, it's like, it's similar to what we do in the fitness rooms upstairs. It's a rubber mat, but it's a little bit thinner. And kind of the idea of thinking for this room with that type of flooring was that it's a flex space as well for fitness programs if needed, if we have need overflow, so it'll be a little bit more low-impact if they need to run some more fitness classes in another space.
Flames walk.
Looks really sharp there.
Yeah. And the gym, so the hoops, I think maybe we saw last month. The floor, I think we saw the ceiling, but I don't know if the lines were on it. So, now all the lines are there. What this picture doesn't show is that the gym padding is at the site, and they're getting that installed this week. And then also the scoreboards. So, this is kind of like the last big equipment pieces in the gym area itself.
It's a great, but it looks like the, I like it. It looks like the renders.
Yeah.
It's amazing how those come a little bit of that.
True, too.
Yeah. So, now we're moving upstairs. This is at the very north end of the hall, so this is where the fitness equipment would be. This is on the very north end, so this is where our treadmills will go, stair steppers, ellipticals, TVs along this wall, basically all the kind of cardio machines in here. And then, as you bend around the area for the central room that we've connected, that's basically standing in that area looking towards the south. And so, this will have most of the strength dumbbells, press machines, all those kind of items in this room here. And the room looks phenomenal. You can see there's some nice light fixtures, kind of this cloud-based ceiling as well. It's quite a bit of space in there, so I feel pretty good about members being happy with the equipment space.
Really, I'm just going to point to our business. Remember, we visited a couple facilities where we got the big spaces, and it just felt really crowded, the grand, and I began working with Brian over to make sure the room for breathing.
And then this is at the very south end of the hallway, entering the group fitness space, which is a nice, large space, big, open windows here. It's with that bird glass as well, which I think gives it a nice look in there. It's really unique spot, and this will all have mirrors along here as well. Mirrors have not been installed yet in the fitness equipment areas either. Those are coming in the next couple weeks. And we actually had a site visit from our fitness equipment sales rep, just kind of getting an overview of what the process is going to be to deliver all the equipment, what's going to be their path to get there, and then we talked a little bit on timeline. So, right now, we're thinking the first week in September is when the fitness equipment installation for, we'll get to the site. I was a little bit surprised. I thought he was going to tell me a week, week and a half, and he said like a day or two. They don't mess around. So, now move to Prairie Play. This is standing on the ramp that goes up to the five, main five-to-twelve structure. So, pretty much all the equipment is put in place, a lot of the five R's in. They have the site prepped for the port in place, so this will all be poured in place down on the sides here. I'm not sure if the big net climber I was able to show last month, if that was up yet or not, but there's definitely some nice images here to be able to see all of our different areas. This is the two-to-five zone with the little houses I personally love. This is our last piece of equipment that was holding us up for quite a while, a turtle, and it is now finally over. And so, shade structures are up as well. This is the view basically coming from the pavilion, and then this ramp here would take you to the zip lines, and you keep going straight. Obviously, we have the seating area with shade, music play, group swing, and then here's our big bay of swings, which reminds me of the old Prairie Play, almost in the exact location as well. So, just have some more outstanding work left here. You can see new gutters, new exterior painting. That was done in the last week. They've also been painting the... They've also been painting the inside of the restrooms. We still do have flooring, new flooring that will go in the restrooms, and then we're working on the replacement for the water fountain here. And then, as I mentioned before, port in place still needs to go in. The retaining wall stones will need to be delivered and placed, and then some backfilling and seeding of disturbed areas. And then internally, we're doing the landscaping in-house. So those plants are, have been delivered to us, and then we're maintaining them until we're ready to get to the site and start doing the planting here. And then, I'm not sure if I mentioned it or not, the parking lot will get milled and resurfaced probably towards the end of the month. It'll be one of the last things they do.
I'll say, I've driven by a few times. It pops.
It does, yeah.
Like, I hope it looks, it looks fun to me. I hope the kids agree that it looks very like fun and energizing.
Well, I gave it the test to my little girls when I was showing them a bunch of pictures of that over the weekend, and they were very excited, and maybe I promised to take them there soon as I could. So that's, they are very happy.
It's been interesting, because right after the old Prairie Play went down, I was giving, you know, people would say, oh, it's terrible, I can't believe you're digging it down. And now everybody's like, this is great, this is wonderful. So it's like, it's really made a difference.
This is a follow-up just from last month's update with the Ambug's new path. So I think last time they had this kind of site prep, basically. Now the path is poured, they need to do some fine grading and seeding, but that connection from University Avenue to the office there at San Perry District, it's poured now. And then one last thing I wanted to touch on, this has been something that we started accumulating funds for in capital budget year twenty twenty-three, and then also set aside some funds in twenty twenty-four. And it's for the trail replacement out at South Ridge. We also put in for RTP grant that was, we did not receive. I just received notice on that a month or so ago. But we recognize that, as you can see in these pictures here, this is from our hardscapes evaluation, that trail's in very rough condition. It's really bad. There's cracks and eaving all throughout it. So we've met with Fairgram, we're working on getting a proposal from them to move forward with the path improvement project, transitioning this to a concrete path around the perimeter here. And we, hopefully we'll have a proposal for you all to review, and we'll have a recommendation potentially next month to where we could get into design, bid this over the course of the winter, and then get into construction next year. Probably belly's going to all over. That's all I have.
It's definitely been a little for a long time.
Yeah.
That's a lot of original painting.
Okay. Was there any further questions for the capital budget? Mr. Brown, Mr. Director?
Just a few updates. I did have a written report, I have a finger injury, wasn't able to type. So I'm back at it, and we're producing purple updates. And I had an excellent, you belong here, report. Hope everyone continues to read and enjoy that, lots of creative inspiration. Just want to thank all the staff. We've just had a great summer, all facilities, camps, programs. Continue to get good feedback, still have a little more summer left. We're excited about the pool being one of the, area pool is still open. There's been a lot of articles in the news that had about area wide pools, some of the challenges. We've been there, we've had times like that. Speaking of pools, Corky's got some updates, some statistics on the outdoor pool. Go ahead.
Okay. So if we remember, in May, we kind of started off a little slow, but we've definitely gained out. The weather changed there in mid-June through most of July, and it was really hot. So comparison numbers, again, last year was a really good year for us, so I've got numbers from twenty twenty-three to now and twenty twenty-four. Again, as we've been, I've been saying for almost two years, last year's count numbers for memberships, the counter wasn't working. So in twenty twenty-three, it says we have one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three visits. I suspect that number is more like where we're at right now in twenty twenty-four. We have eight thousand three hundred and seventy-seven pass holders that have gone through the gate. Daily admissions, we did thirty-one thousand three hundred and five daily admissions this time last year, and right now we're at thirty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-two visits, so just a hair over the daily count. Daily revenue, so this is them paying when they come in, in twenty twenty-three, we're at one hundred and eighty-three thousand two thirty, and this year we are at one hundred and eighty-one thousand fifty-two dollars. So very comparable to last season. Hopefully, we get another couple of weeks of good weather and good use. But it's been a good year. Staff levels have been great. This is always the challenge the last couple of weeks. You know, that's the main reason why a lot of pools close, is because the high school kids go back, college kids go back to their universities. Another advantage, I think, for us is we have our indoor pool, so our guards who went home for the summer, for you and I, are now coming back, so we get the advantage of utilizing them for a couple of weeks before our indoor pool opens back up. So so far, everything's going really well.
Great. Thank you, Corky. Continuing absolutely with the outdoor pool. Just want to, even draw the board's attention, you know, we're at a ten-year window for the outdoor pool. I know it's hard to believe, but my emphasis and point would be, I recommend that staff probably gain some sort of internal body. Here's what we learned when we transitioned to our new pool. Every decade, starting at ten, twenty, and thirty, definitely do some sort of analysis, review of how we're doing, staffing, facilities, any issues or problems, customer feedback, that sort of thing. So that's something I'd recommend staff do, at least at this ten-year window. One item I would bring up, you know, that probably needs to be looked at, we continue, I continue to hear comments about the challenges with the San Plank area at the pool. It's just not utilized. It's a messy issue in the water. I know when we first looked at that, you know, the initial idea is little kids love it, it's a nice thing for very small kids, because it's successful and they can, you know, identify with, I mean, the same. Probably for your patrons, staff, and other pool operations, it's, you know, a challenge. So for example, if we were willing to look at the future improvements to re-infigurate our user base, you know, some small spray feature could be installed that might create more interest. But the emphasis on what are we doing to renew or refresh our pool that we can brag about, promote, and maybe get, you know, more people coming, because I don't think, you know, we're entertaining the idea, you know, some nation in the future, but there could be things, you know, we do this, first the place up. So again, I'd say after we close, be good operation for leadership, and then the aquatics team, they kind of go through and make sure, you know, we're tracking and not missing anything. I think the most important thing we learned is, if you do those things in your deli trip, you reinvest, your pool, you're likely to extend that pool life a lot longer. So that would be the motivation. So stay tuned for any new information on that.
One project that we do have on the list is recoding our slides, like them.
Yeah, I should ask, other plans for.
So that'll be something that will be very visible when we get it done. So again, I appreciate Tim on looking for ten years and, you know, what kinds of things can we do to make it better?
Even, you know, painting or a different color, or, you know, they, you know, appeal to the eye. So let's stay tuned and see what we can do. Obviously, those things cost funds, and you have to balance that with your current needs, but I think the other thing we learned is, make sure you're front-loading pool renovations as you go. Don't wait till they're piled up and not sustainable. Moving ahead, just to report the art fair at Crystal Lake Park was a great success. We had really great reviews, great attendance, we get the feedback from the vendors. They liked the location, I think they have really good staff support, so very pleased with that, and look forward to what could come later next year. I think, just want to touch on Weaver and Prairie Master, our master plans. I know Bob Baden is here tonight, but just want to compliment the staff team at Barnesworth for really working hard, sticking with it. Obviously, when we alerted that there was a community concern, you know, we really did the right thing, we took the time out, started to really start working in a wider, more comprehensive way. I think that led to a much, much improved sense of something for all in this overall plan. So we look forward to seeing the staff presentation. We had a terrific discussion and study session, and we plan to take the whatever state we're in to updat again this month to sort of close the ranks on that. So very pleased and glad to see some really exciting plan options coming up.
Anybody for next year, entering that as a subject, or as a subject for IPRA?
Yeah, we talked about that.
I just think that would make a great session.
It's really good project.
Because I don't think we find anybody else who's done that, the process. I mean, they do the process, but not like we. I think that'd be a great.
Well, it's custom really to our district, and we always foster that sort of an approach. At least since I was done when I got here, and still continue. So really listening and working with your community, I think is, we know, is very, very important. Let's see, moving on, Kikpoo Ground Trail updates. We could probably spend the rest of the evening talking about that exciting project, but as you know, our focus is on the new shelter that's coming to the north end of River Park. We'll see that in a little bit, what that looks like in the plan. We're getting some traction with the Union Pacific Railroad on that really long-term problem in St. Joe's, so we're very relieved to learn that they're at least in communication. Norfolk Southern working on the acquisition. Doesn't seem like there's an immediate interest in selling, but we're discussing lease. And along with that, need to confirm with DCO that our funds can be applied, at least long-term lease property, so fill some checks there. Also, happy to report, we did apply and receive an extension for the overall projects. That will finish August of twenty twenty-seven, so we do have a little more time. And I think, I'm not worried so much about the construction, or we should always be worried about construction, but assuming it comes on as typical, it's probably the land issues that are the most vexing. So a little more time there would help. I think we have staff interested in looking at some activities, some events, that we could start again, you know, thinking about or planning. Last I want to mention, too, we wanted, I'm recommending that we engage with the Friends Group and get our Urbana Parks Foundation in communication, you know, and thinking about, could be some potential donors that might be interested in having a name on the new pavilion. There could be specific people they're talking with that we're not aware of, and so I'd like to at least meet with the Friends Foundation and make that request, would they be interested in helping, looking, sharing, you know, collaborating on any of that. I know our foundation would be open to that, because we're beginning to think about those area amenities and how we can start to, you know, better understand them, probably maybe get better understanding of their costs, and begin looking for potential builders for the future. So it's never too early or late, as in the case of our health and wellness facility. We continue to get good news with that, which was later on the agenda. Champaign-Urbana Special Rec, just want to report, we're getting more folks joining our advisory meeting. We just had a new person join, former staff member, Rachel Boss came on, and really excited about some of the new members. Real focus on fundraising and seeing some project implementation in that area, so we're looking forward to where that group will take us. If we mentioned UpDak already, but just a reminder, we have our kickoff meeting in September. We used to do it in August, but we found that August was still a travel month for people. We weren't getting good turnout, but we were getting a lot of people at the September, so we just moved that to September, and I think on the agenda, we'll either be visiting Prairie Play or Humpin' Wellness, depending on which would be to have an advantage and work with us there. Just want to report, last Thursday, August eighth, we had a great community turnout and for a back school event at Dr. Williams Elementary School, to walk that neighborhood, promoting school activities and the new health and wellness facility. We had a lot of volunteers show up, canvass that in the neighborhood, so I'm really excited about that, that we're continuing, you know, to get the word out, both for the school and the park district, and the collaborative work we're doing together there. Slightly less happy news, a month or so ago, we reported that we were awarded to Representative Basinski's office, a large gift of three-point-three million dollars. I should say we were listed on that. And then obviously, we remain aware, there is a process through Congress, and obviously we're alerted there could be reductions, and there were reductions, and notified that our amount was reduced to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So obviously, that let a lot of air out of the balloon, sharing with the foundation yesterday. I think our hope was that could be a nice lead into a base two level of work that would have reasonable resources to get us further. So if we're back to whole fashion fundraising and grants and see what we can do there, but I think the master plan components are very compelling, and I think we have a really good chance of attracting attention and certainly applying for grants and seeing how well we can do there. That's probably a good lesson in political fundraising, wait till you have the check in your bank, and before you get too excited about that. So learn the lesson there.
Well, and that's, they were making focus. They, their office put out that three-point-three million dollars, I think, so it's not really under your control.
Right. And then there's a subsequent article, the documentation, the article on what everyone was going to be able to do with that was very convincing. And so I think that we learned at least how that process can work in, while we're in Congress. So stay tuned, we'll see how things actually turn out. Let's see, I think. Oh, last thing I want to comment, we've recorded, we've been involved, but I think it's ongoing and worth reporting, Prairie Rivers Network has been doing research for the past five years about the impacts of herbicide drift, which recall last April, we had a collaborative effort for the boneyard arts festival on the trees in Coral Park. We're all wrapped with burlap ribbons indicating this sort of activities continues. We know there's trees impacted there, you know, what's the future of our urban forests? They continue to report, you know, there's herbicide drift. I know they keep an eye on several of our properties, and I was alerted, you know, this last week, that, you know, damage has been seen at that little park, on the plants, you know, it's everywhere. Basically, if you're not aware, when large-scale pesticides are applied, even at homescape, but generally more on agricultural level or large scale, several of the chemicals have the ability to drift, some volatiles, maybe they vaporize lift, they can move for several miles for several days, and the impacts. And our own home has been coated in spray, you could smell it and taste it, you know, for two or three days. Our trees are all cupping, this is my home park, oaks, you know, showing, you know, distress. So we're seeing it throughout the district. Last summer, Derek and I were involved in a kind of a leadership walk with our elected officials in both cities. We saw sites in Urbana, sites in Champaign, you know, where there's definite indications of herbicide drift. Probably the larger question and problem is, what can we do about it? So I think what Prairie Rivers is trying to do is one great bit of alert, are we educating people, letting people know what is happening around? They just published a report, they have a new report out, we can forward it all to you if you're interested, that really talks about the research, how they came up with the information, how they did analysis, but, you know, it's concerning because it's not likely an immediate change, whether there's alternatives and a stop to that. I think there's an effort underway at the governor's office to, you know, at least with the governor and the state, you know, into a response mode, you know, creating the attention. So again, as a partner of Prairie Rivers, you know, we want to work as closely as we can, if there's anything we can do. Something I recommended to them after the art show at Coral Park is, hey, if we're really trying to create awareness, there's an annual conference that the Parks and Rec Association puts on every year in Chicago. Every park district, forest and reserve conservation district is there. Be a great way to get a large number of people informed about this. So I think I was invited to do a session with Prairie Rivers about that in January at the conference. So again, the focus is how do we alert park districts and forest reserves, people can look, you know, I mean, record. So I think I was invited to do a session with Prairie Rivers about that in January at the conference. So again, the focus is how do we alert park districts and forest reserves? People can look, you know, I mean, reports we heard on the water last summer, where we noticed something with our trees and some of our plants look different. And you know, kind of what's going on is the climate change, is it chemicals, weather, you know, what is it? And so obviously, more information is needed and there'll be probably a lot of concern, you know, from citizens, I'm sure manufacturers of these chemicals are going to love hearing this news and seeing it broadcast. But it's a really serious issue. And so as you're walking about town, look at trees, shrubs, just keep your eyes open. Again, Coral Park, this number of trees that are, you'll see a thimmy at the top, cupping of the leaves, particularly the red buds. I think the oaks are, maples and other trees are, you know, forming smaller leaves. You know, they're moving away from fruit production into just, you know, surviving, sort of continuing to grow a certain size. Where it will go and to what proportion, so that I don't know. But it's, it's something that I think has solid research behind it. And, you know, it's a responsible agency, I think we need to recognize that and help do our part by doing a big focus and keep track of it.
NPR has been doing pieces about that. And I've been hearing them on NPR, which has been really over many years. They've been doing the same, I didn't even know about it till.
You'll buy extensions, you went to forestry webinar series, I signed up for them. First one was last week, and they started a couple of herbicide drift impacts. Kind of interesting in that report, what they're now recording is that farmers are seeing it on crops. Because it is intended to do good, but as it drifts to another crop, it could potentially do damage. So it's starting to be noticed amongst the farmer farm, the agricultural community. Again, probably need more information, better experts than my recording, you know, to keep about that. But just doing our part to make sure we're keeping our residents informed and let them know that we're actively concerned, we're actively engaged with, you know, information and promotion of the situation. That's all I had, I can answer any questions if we have any. Thanks.
Looking at the President's Report, I don't have anything specific to report, having been out of town. In terms of upcoming meetings, already been mentioned, August 27th. UpTech being with the kind of the Mollus Center opening or River Park Master Plan. We have a study session on the 3rd. And the Mollus Center opening planning is among the topics for that. And September 10 will be our major portion. In terms of UpTech class kickoff, which was the day as a possible, I didn't know, you think we're going to discuss what might be done or?
Yeah. Yeah, so as Tim mentioned, you know, we have kind of made a change and moved it. We've done it sometime over the past few years, I think. And typically, kind of the program, I guess, for that usually is kind of looking back at what UpTech's done the previous year sort of historically, and then looking ahead to what the future year kind of holds for our new members. There's usually a kind of social component to it, usually a group and just kind of get to know each other a little bit. This year, it kind of depends, I think, on where we are in various projects. So we don't have the location pinned down just yet. So I think we'll get together probably to talk about where things will be looking as of late September, when we plan to have that meeting and make a decision on, you know, whether or not we'll be, we'll be doing that at Prairie Play or at Health and Wellness. And those two projects were kind of considered mainly because they've had really heavy UpTech involvement over the, over the past few years. And so we wanted to be able to highlight those as part of the kickoff.
But the kickoff's not like an actual, actual point.
Oh, no, not for like a grand opening or anything actually related. It's more of an invitation for our UpTech members to sort of see and experience, you know, what UpTech has been part of, yeah.
So UpTech meeting on the 24th of September. Can I play you some of these upcoming dates? How soon are we likely to have the calendar date for grand opening? And then for the, I mean, potential people got to carve it out to the time when they can.
We want to talk about that, what's our projections? I know we have a couple of things on the indoor, health and wellness facility, lunch list, construction items. Probably turn the building to us and then we'll let the project managers talk about that. I don't know if any dates have been recommended.
Sure, well, I know, pretty early we were talking after Jazz Lock. We were basically trying to tie in Jazz Lock, also doing the sculpture dedication. So we feel pretty comfortable about that at this point. Amy mentioned his presentation, I think they moved pretty quickly there. So this may sometimes have covered, haven't nailed the date yet for Health and Wellness. I think in October still.
So we're thinking soft opening in October. Obviously, our hall guides are out, so we couldn't plan. You know, October 15th, we're going to be in the building so we can have full classes and that kind of stuff. So we're looking to do a soft opening. Don't have an exact date in October yet as we're, as we start putting, getting everything together. I think originally, we, the building would have been turned over by now, but we're a couple of weeks back on that. So we are in the process of hiring our last full-time position for that facility. We will bring that in long, we'll start talking sometime between October and January for like a grand opening celebration. Our goal is the, you know, January 2nd, start full programming out of that facility. We're set up at Brookins on a month-to-month basis. So we told them we're pretty much will be there through December, so that we can get things moved accordingly. So we'll be working on it quite heavily here. Probably have more information for you as we move into September. But right now, the tentative plan is sometime in October as a soft opening. Or full programming will do January 2nd. But with the soft opening, we're also planning to do like some sample fitness classes and things of that nature for where people can start to see what's going to be happening in there as we move forward in the near.
Trying to avoid just advertising a date and then I push it back. Sometimes some of our projects, but I try to avoid that scenario.
Our focus in Champaign, always right away, hey, avoid that, we did that. We set dates thinking, oh, we'll be, we'll be there. Whether delays with materials, they had to, so I do dates. So we kind of, let's get a better feel and then we can announce and that would hopefully avoid some sort of reschedule.
I didn't have anything further to discuss there. I don't know, here's on record, the finance study group last met, I think actually was on the 14th of June. It was indeed the 27th.
Wasn't that meant as a scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
So I don't think we have met, I mean, the board has met twice since the last finance study group meeting. And so, and I think between those two meetings, we've covered essentially everything. Either in either in Isagen or other than the, he or I want. So I don't think anything further down there. We will be, we are scheduled to meet on the 23rd of this month. And I don't know, as I said, you have, I think they had, I assume that the policy study group has not met.
Correct. Parks Foundation, that's this week?
We did mostly reports. They continue to talk about getting an educational informational component to the meetings to just, just kind of bring the board up to speed. That's, that's about it.
And I think further on UpTech, can we, can I break a little bit?
Uh, no, yeah, we didn't have a meeting in July, of course. UpTech planning last met end of April and we slated out topics kind of for the rest of the year. So we'll look to meet again probably before the end of the year.
Any other questions on various ways of running? Here in them, let's move on to old business, of which there is none because nothing was removed from the percentage that they're for separate action. So we are on to new business, Robin and Lohine, item A, action to approve a gift agreement with the Reichardt Foundation for the Mollus.
Perfect good news, Kelsey. We'll turn it to you.
Yeah, absolutely. Some great news to report. I'll just give a little, a little background. So staff began working with the Reichardt family, I believe it was in 2022, in regard to the Blair Park project. So they have a long history with Blair Park, grew up using it, you know, loved it, have a great affinity for that project. They were really energized by the improvements that they saw there. And I think wanted to be part of, you know, taking it to even the next level. And so we had opened up a conversation with that regarding a gift to renovate the pavilion there. And it resulted in actually this board approving a gift agreement with them to be a local match in the event that we won an AusLID grant that we had applied for. Unfortunately, we did not receive the grant and were unable to move forward with that project. However, I think the Reichards did appreciate, you know, our willingness to sort of work with them. And, you know, we stayed in touch with them. And then this summer, they had approached us about the Health and Wellness Facility. They're real Urbana people. I think they, when they approached us, staff took them on a tour of the facility. And I think they really saw the potential for community partnership and community building that can happen there. They were really excited by that and really wanted to be part of it. And so we, we talked with them about potential naming opportunities. And they were very interested in naming the community room. And so, you know, in working with them, we came to a gift agreement that proposes a $100,000 pledge to be paid over four years to the Urbana Parks Foundation with recognition at the community room. The community room is called the Reichardt Family Community Room. And so I'll invite any other staff who's worked with them that jumped in if they have any other insights they'd like to share. But, you know, we're really glad to have gotten to a point where we can, could make something happen. I think they were really excited to do something at Blair and I think that was, you know, disappointing. I think we were kind of disappointed all around that that didn't work out. But we're really pleased to be able to have this opportunity now and invite them to be part of this project.
I could just add that the community room in general is a perfect fit. They're really excited about us working with community groups. They have a real vision for that as well. They do a lot of things in the community. So it, they're just a perfect fit for them. So it's great to think when it comes around.
Is there a specific use in mind for that fund?
Just overall, you know, fund reserves that we've had to use. So we'll, we'll be requesting that. We have it set up to come up every November, be paid by November 15th so that we can request it at the end of the year from the foundation. So it's just going in to pay back our, our fund reserves, yeah.
Certainly that we're still reaching people with this message. You know, it's not old, it's not planned, it's still very exciting. There could still be further interest. Do you think when people get in the building and see there's still some gaming opportunities? You know, we want to think about that. And the most exciting thing is, I think they've, family mentioned, are they're still interested in the River Park. So that may be something that could come back in a different way. Certainly the door's open for discussion, what could be done. So again, we're pushing it all the way around.
I move, the Urbana Parks District Board Commissioners approved this gift agreement with the Reichardt Family Foundation for Health and Wellness Center.
That's been moved in second. And is there any further discussion or questions other than, it's a very generous proposal. Here in them, it's still a roll call, but there's a book.
Hi.
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 And that carries for now, please. Item B, action to approve a donation agreement with OSF Healthcare.
More good news.
Yeah, yeah. So as I think everyone on this board is aware, we've been in conversations with OSF for quite a long time as it relates to health and wellness. You know, we've been working, they've always shown, I think, an interest and affinity for the initiatives that we've presented and shared with them. But the timing has never quite lined up the way that we had hoped. And so the good news is, it seems like the timing is now lining up. So with the Health and Wellness Center opening this fall, we all know that making sure that people have access is going to be critically important. There's a lot of people in our community that even though the membership fee is pretty modest when compared to private, you know, private facilities, it's still going to be a significant barrier for families here. And so in, in comes OSF. They are, per this donation agreement, they are pledging $30,000 per year towards scholarships for the facility. And that level of funding, I think in our pricing structure, will provide about 240 community members completely free access to the facility on an individual membership basis. That number could change depending on whether those scholarships are used for families or versus individuals. But, so yeah, huge impact. And in recognition of that gift, we will be naming the exercise equipment room, the larger one, the weights and the treadmills and things. That'll be the OSF Healthcare Fitness Room. And then the scholarship itself will be called the OSF Healthcare Scholarship. So we're really excited about that. We're so glad that, that we could, that we could get to an agreement with them because we've been working with them for a long time. And I think they really want, have wanted to do something and just the timing wasn't lining up. And so, you know, we're really glad that we're here today. We may have to share this with you. So this gift will be going to the park district directly. And again, Corky here, Corky specifically, I feel like. I want to invite him to speak if he has anything to add.
I'm glad we were able to find something that, that works both for them and for us. Again, both of these individuals and, individual and the company, they, they believe in the mission and they figure we belong here, there's really a lot sold there. And so tonight even, we had Jamil and Kern were at the Dr. Williams Cookout, Back to School Cookout with forms for people to fill out for memberships for the facility. So it's going to help out tremendously. It'll be going around with Urbana in the coming years so that we can get people signed up in the facility. And then of course, when we do that, one of the things we want to track is as we give them those scholarships away, be able to track how they're being used to see if our mode is, is working or if we need to try something different. It's one thing to take on a membership, but if you don't use it, then it's not helping much. So, yeah, it's great to finally find that piece that really interested OSF.
I do have a few questions in regards to this. Just in terms of usage of the funds, right? Does, obviously, like the OSF is. Does, obviously like OSF is deemed as capable to use towards memberships, right? Is there any indication as like specifically exist those memberships or is that just open to our interpretation?
It's open to our interpretation. We plan to use these very similarly to how we do the Urbana scholarships. So we, when we take Urbana out and we're in our high hope neighborhoods or some partner events where we're reaching people we don't typically reach, that's the ultimate goal is to be able to hand them out in, in that fashion. Now with school, district, uh, the walk that Tim talked about, we walked that whole neighborhood. Um, so it was, well, it was a lot of the community actually, but that, that neighborhood got hit pretty hard. Uh, Scottswood and Lierman and Washington, on the other side of Washington. Um, but in those bags, we had, um, information about the scholarships, information about the facility. Uh, we also split the price of some water bottles that we'll be selling in the facility or maybe handing out to members. Um, but they say you, you, Urbana Park District and OSF, so again, it's, it's a joint partnership that we're all trying to come up, solve the same mission. So, um, it, it really is up to our purview of who, who we want to get them to, but ultimately it's our you belong here, where we're going for outreach is where we're going to be taking those scholarships.
I, I also have a question. It's item two, the use of donation. I just wondered if there was a discussion with them about what's in addition to how it's acknowledged that OSF's continued participation with the Park District is conditioned and guided by the moral teachings of the Holy Catholic Church.
There was a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
That's why it took us a long time to bring.
Yeah.
And Matt Gearing was finally able to change the wording, tweak the wording.
Okay.
Um, to recognize the fact that we're a government agency.
I noticed the next, the next sentence, kind of the balance.
That was a, that was a six month process getting through that statement right there.
Yeah, so the, well, the champagne park visitor visited that as well. So I think, you know, it's covered in those two sentences.
Thank you.
Well, uh, so in that regard, the questions answered, uh, I move that the Urbana Park District Board Commissioners approve the donation agreement with OSF Healthcare for Health and Wellness Center's scholarships.
Is that moved and seconded? Is there any further discussion or questions on the item? All right, now let's go roll call, starting with Doug.
Aye.
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 That carries for now, please.
Good job.
And, um, item C, to, uh, to accept, uh, in River Park and Prairie Park Master Plan.
After a couple of mentions at tonight's meeting, the staff wanted to kind of walk us back through the, the plan options, the highlights, over the details. At study session, we did have Jeff Martin from Barnesworth Group, we kind of walked you basically whole process. Obviously the board's been very involved in the project, so it's not like it's new information. I think everything was familiar, recognizable, but tonight we wanted to at least finalize all the improvements or a few comments that came up that, that got addressed. Certainly if there's anything that folks see tonight or notice or want to ask about, certainly that's why we're here. Um, but I think staff's very pleased with the outcome. Um, I think we've got a very good plan and alternative, um, depending on how things go. If our staff can tell us more.
Well, we've talked about long processes a lot this evening, this was, this is one of those, about a two-year process. And so, uh, Keenan came on midway through the process. When Keenan came on, we finished, uh, some, I'll say more community-wide input, we had a community-wide survey, uh, we had some focus groups and we had two very drafty plans representing, uh, the feedback we got from that, what had put us, uh, in a position where we realized we need to take more time to involve more folks. After Keenan came in and, uh, we did a very extensive process and I'll, I'll keep talking a little bit about some of the work that he did in terms of community outreach and really focused around the neighborhood surrounding Weaver and Prairie Parks.
So based off our school and community engagement subcommittee, we met a first time and a second time, kind of in February 2024 or maybe March, closer to April, around then. Uh, we heard from them that we needed more engagement from the surrounding communities. So we went out kind of on a quest to, uh, get more engagement from groups like Dream, um, Dr. Preston Williams, we met there twice, kind of with their students during a lunch hour and then after school, uh, during a parent teacher conference. We also met with Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, which is just around the corner from there. And I want to say that, um, Principal Jackson from Dr. Preston Williams, she was very enthusiastic, very happy about the, uh, the vision boards we brought. She and her students were, uh, just very excited about all the different opportunities that were to come since they're directly kind of right across the street from, uh, Prairie Park there. And, and over at, uh, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, we actually met with, uh, the students one time and then another, uh, session with the staff. The students were very excited. They typically have to travel on a bus if they want to go somewhere, you know, kind of fun and exciting to go, they mentioned to us. So this would be a great opportunity for them to kind of program with them maybe and do a joint partnership and hopefully, you know, have some activities for them there. So they're looking really forward to that. Um, but there were some other groups that we met with as well. Um, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think we had a total of around seven to six groups we met with, um, kind of from, I'd say, the end of our stakeholder meetings, which were around March, going all the way to the end of May. Um, and then once we got to our final stakeholder meeting on May 20th, um, that's when, uh, we kind of had different plans to show them there and we kind of reconvened after that. And I went on, um, to hand out over, I think, 300 flyers around the room. And so that's when we kind of put together our three open houses with the primary one being at Dr. Preston Williams. And that was a chance for the community to come meet designers and our staff group, um, to kind of get more of an idea of the newer plans. And so that was the, most of the engagement I did on my end. Um, I was strictly going out to, um, schools and outreach groups to kind of get more of an idea of what they would like to see at Weaver and Prairie Parks. And I think we got amazing feedback and, which ultimately gave us a great plan in the end.
I would say that, uh, the work that Keenan did, you know, very focused around the neighborhood of some of our outreach groups, along with the early work we did community-wide, came together to these two plans, really three months of balance of both community-wide interest and more focused neighborhood interest. And so option 3.0 is, as Jeff presented at the study session, is sort of our preferred option. It reflects this, this slidehill going away and we're optimistic that that can happen. We do have this option 3.1 kind of in our back pocket. If it doesn't, we bring it back to you all if we need to, to think about that. But, uh, 3.0 really provides a lot of breathing room, is a bit of active use activities around Prairie Park. Uh, in both options, uh, almost all the natural area in the park is preserved and we're able to include most of our soccer program there and the trailer facility. And so we're enthusiastic to recommend to you all, uh, that you all accept option 3.0 as the preferred option for us to move forward. Uh, next step would be to work with Barnesworth on getting estimates for all the, all the construction costs. They have a bid opening for Monticello project. I think it's either this week or next that they're going to give them up-to-date numbers that we can use for our cost estimates. So, uh, really want to say what a great project it's been. We kind of did the UPD way where we doubled over and took a lot of, a lot of effort into getting community input. I think everybody we've talked to is, is pleased with the outcome. Um, I'm glad Bob picked a choice tonight to, to share that as well.
It was great to have all that input because it really creates the evidence of, you know, sort of the staff program that is presented, showing that there is a lot of support for all of those type of activities. So it really is a shared park. I think it speaks well with our community and I think it provides that area of amenities that we currently don't have in Urbana, at least together in a complex like that. Again, I talked in comparison to Crystal Lake, where we're able to, you know, put a master plan together, put some time and running into it. And now we're seeing the benefits of things working while coming together, you know, a little bit older park to say, but now in this newer opportunity, the new facility, um, it's just, it's just a great foot forward and I think everybody is excited about that. We're excited about getting adopted because that leads us to talking with, again, potential donors, putting priorities together on which next item should be looked at for construction. How do we get resource? That's the, one of our internal questions, but until you have a project and a number and you start putting it to use, um, anything can happen. So we're very energized and looking forward to that. And one direction if there are any other changes, comments, concerns with the plan that we can address tonight.
Anything that came out of the study session is that we did incorporate, uh, the desire for dark sky principle, uh, throughout the, the park planning, particularly in River Park, uh, some additional burning around the wetland. Um, the, uh, I think you all, some of the things that you all really kind of focused and celebrated on were kind of that, that community commentary around Prairie Park and that being an active zone. Um, and so I feel like it's just, it's, uh, it's a plan that really reflects, uh, the needs of the community as a whole, but, but also does so in a way that really honored the interest of the immediate neighbors that Keenan worked so hard to get involved in this participation in. So it's a, it's an exciting moment for us. And I think Roger, you had asked about cost estimates on the slidehill and there, there's still, uh, we're, we're working to start to get a better quantity of how much material is there. We have two somewhat variable quantity estimates from Barnesworth and from Open Road, but at the low end, it could be a little over $160,000 if we move close by. There'd be some more like UC Woods or maybe some large construction projects happening around, uh, with Urbana. Um, at the high end, uh, you know, it could be $40,000, uh, you know, there, there was one estimate in that $750, but that reflected a lot more material than we think is there and reflected taking it far, far away. So I think we're probably even more than that, uh, 240 to 400,000 dollar range.
So the testing is complete to the point of having some idea, there aren't particular dangers to it?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So it came back as, uh, clean construction demolition debris. So, uh, there, although there is some asphalt and some concrete in there, um, majority of it is, is suitable, you know, fill material, uh, in terms of environmental, uh, contaminants. Uh, nothing came up that was always primitive for its use. So we wouldn't use it under a building or a ri, or a highway, um, so there's lots of applications that'd be suitable, ones you have.
Planning for you, accepted, you know, that gives staff an opportunity to go out and start talking to people or, you know, finding new homes or anything that might be some materials.
Yeah, and I assume we, we keep 3.1 in existence in case, in fact, we run into a snag and that, that differences are, I'm not going to say they're minimal, but, but there's a lot to say on both of them, probably.
Right. I think something I would suggest that's going to be a challenge for us is we, we have a safety problem now with the condition of, of the, the spoil pile because it's, you know, holes for ground hogs and it's.
That, that might be one of the first things that needs to happen is actually that.
I can't imagine trying to get a workaround, you know? And the other fact, you know, it's really not embraced or utilized as the, you know, eternal destination. Our snow bays are, you know, pretty limited. We have other snow sled opportunities. So I think, you know, my sense, every group we've talked to, it's sort of the, the item that doesn't fit now in this wonderful plan. And so the urging is to make that go away because the rest of this is worth having. So I think that's where we want to start, having conversations with people, what does that look like? Who can know, um, how much, when? Um, so I think that it's, it's probably something that has to go away for us. You would have to reinvest in creating something else that would not have those, those challenges. I'm not sure quite what that is. You know, I think the obvious problem is it's too large. You wouldn't build a slidehill like that or whatever. I think it was a spoil pile within the later, well, let's call it a slidehill. So I think moving it away from that, you know, terminology is really important. Um, and so I kind of presented, look, it was a good, cost-effective solution for many, many years as East Urbana's developed. Now that we're moving into that next layer of refinement development, making some adjustments so that, you know, the plan fits the current need and it doesn't become an obstacle to our success. Um, because I think people look at those other amenities, they're really excited and want to know, when do we get this? And nobody's talking about, well, how do we massage that into something different? You know, it's a like, by the way, but Michael's point though, if for whatever reasons, unknown or unseen, we couldn't manage that, then we probably have a plan, you know, in our pocket that would accommodate something, uh, that still meet our basic program needs.
I think there's an aesthetic aspect of it as well, that was, that we kind of discussed more at the study session. Yeah, like not just like, you know, not a physical, like literal eyesore of like a big hill filled with holes and gophers or whatever, but it's right, like imagine, rather be at Blair Park, right? That is like this really great space. It's like multimodal, but like part of what makes it good is that you can see all the interesting things. And so having this physical obstruction in the midst of all of our space is.
No argument. The question is, you know, it's going to take us a while with the funding, right? To the whole nine yards and you could do pieces of it without actually having that hill disappear. That would not be a challenge.
Right. So we would be a good, I hear you, a good situation to allow us to still advance, look for opportunity and then if something, you know, doesn't turn out and there's still an opportunity to still work it into the system.
Now that doesn't address your concern that there's some immediate dangers. I mean, it's a public nuisance in a sense.
I recommend that we close it and that we post it and that we try to keep people off of it because I believe that will help. Obviously we're in construction right now and, you know, it's not a real concern overall, but once all that stops and the owners turn over us and the site's cleared off and back open, it would be in our best interest to continue that message as closed or, you know, relocation plan. Stay tuned.
I, I think the other thing is just visually, if you're talking about having donors that are interested in doing something there, having that big hill as really basically an eyesore for that, that project is going to make it a tougher subject.
I think that's an excellent point, one I hadn't really, I'm lost. Thank you, Patrick.
Oh, I sit up. I've sat on the foundation.
Yeah, I've said you. Kind of set me back there.
Yeah.
But with all good luck and good effort, if we could get some traction on that and do it sooner or over time in the near term, I think that would solve the problem and open the door for those great sidelines and probably like people really would like to see it.
On that note, what I wanted to mention too, um, to, to, because I want you to, the study session was that kind of village green amenity that's, yeah, it's like number 16, right? So like the idea that it's like the skate park is on one side of 14 and then there's like the splash pad sections and then the basketball and then like the kind of natural area with like the, the water from the, from the.
Get such drainage.
So just like it creates like this extra like walking loop and this communal area. So that.
Set by village.
Yeah. And so I think just that, that aspect, just like that design tweak kind of is like, oh, it's really just big rating. And then like both sides of it.
If, if the hill is doing that, it's $40,000, you could make a pretty good case for the whole thing.
I really appreciate that fine tuned attention to understanding the plan, etc. Because I, you know, you're right, we had some bugs and issues and we have presumably older, faster, maybe more able-bodied skate, you know, skate skaters with small kids in a playground or a spray ground. How do you manage that? You know, you want it together, you want the energy, but you don't want them to be on top of each other. So having some buffer and alternative and also space that could use for Urbana's activities, you know, sort of any of those.
Power goes from part of Urbana right in the middle then.
Exactly.
For our state.
We got it a little.
Sure.
We kick it around.
If, if we're at that point, I would like to move that the Urbana Park District Board Commissioners accept option 3.0 as the plan would record for Weaver and Prairie Parks.
One second. Has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the form? I guess the only thing I'll, I'll say is that specifically, uh, you may have said that she was very excited about this plan as well.
Yeah, sure. I, oh God, I just wanted to thank, thanking UpDak and the board and the foundation for holding steady in this, you know, it's a lot, we heard from a lot of people, there's a lot of concerns and, you know, I think it was uncertain at some point how things would turn out despite our efforts to. at some point how things would turn out despite our efforts to look at it historically and what our current program is. So thanks to the boards for holding steady, being open to listen, you know, encouraging people to come out and at the same time urging staff to look for opportunities to work together. So just want to say thank you back as part of that motion approval.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor or on the table. Do local, starting with her.
Aye.
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 And that carries now. It's all for present permission. There's no new business work that has ended yet, so we're down to Roman World, Sam Collins from the legislature.
I saw a really cool thing happen. You belong here on Sunday. We have a person who uses the pavilion at Clear Park quite a bit and he's there almost every day now. A big group of people came to use the pavilion Sunday for a picnic and he was in there and they, he actually, as soon as they walked up, he said, I was here first. I was walking the dog. I kind of slowed down and listened. And they invited him to partake with them. They brought all this food in, he actually ate with them, but he didn't really converse with anybody, but he was made part of their, it was so nice to see that two people, two groups of people could like resolve that. And it was just really nice. Like you belong here, that was, that was it right there. So that was my, it's really cool.
Well, I'd just like to throw my two cents in that I think the staff took an enormous amount of grief through this process and didn't turn bitter, easily have done so. Stay open to the input from the community. And out and saw even more. And I think they've had this job and making something that the community could go this around rather than have a fight about. I hope I'm not misreading the tea leaves on that, but it's just a tremendous amount of effort and it reflects well on the way we at the Urbana Park District have been doing things over the years. And I'm actually quite proud of it.
I guess I did have one thing that I wanted to say is I know a number of you know that I was conflicted about the, the master plan that was originally presented, being both on the Autobahn Board and on this board. And we, we meet tomorrow night in a special meeting and I'll be very, very proud to be able to present this to you and say, this is, this is what happened. Some of you were involved in this and who listened, the Park District listened and that's really critical.
Seeing that, I think he was very gentle, close to him. Thanks to everyone for coming out tonight.